Thank you for being here. And the Fayette County Board of Education welcomes public comment during our regular business meetings. Speakers will have up to three minutes to make their presentations. A timer will be available and visible from the podium. Please conclude your remarks when the buzzer sounds. All comments should address a matter related to Fayette County Public Schools. Speakers should be courteous and refrain from making personal attacks. In order to maintain respect for all points of view, the Board requests that no clapping, booing, or any other form of support or non-support be used. Public comments are an opportunity for the Board to listen to the community. Follow-up responses, if needed, will be provided by the Superintendent. The requests are based on Board Policy BCBI. So please come to the platform when you are recognized by the Chair. And please state your name and address before beginning your presentation. And the timer will begin when you start your statement. Number one. Ms. Catherine Furlong.
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 Good evening. My name is Catherine Furlong. I live at 25 Massey Hollow. I have two daughters that are in the Fayette County School System. One goes to Booth and one goes to Huddlestone. I actually went to Booth myself, graduated from McIntosh in 1987. Went to UGA, was a dog. Graduated from there with my bachelor's degree. Went into the Air Force. And I only served Air Force officer. I separated honorably as a captain. And I now am a HR manager for the Cab County School System. Or not School System, Cab County Government. Excuse me. And so I've been working there for the government for 17 years. I am here today to talk about the Welcoming Schools Initiative. I definitely support that. I think it is a great initiative. In addition to everything else, I am also a Board Member of the Peachtree City P-Flag Group. That's the support group that meets for gays and lesbians and transgender people like that. As you know, it's a big hot thing in the society these days. And it's really hard on some people, especially young kids. And we provide a forum for parents, for children, for friends, anybody, if you're gay, if you're straight, if you have a friend who's gay, doesn't matter what your relationship is. We're there to support you, to help you talk through your issues and stuff. And we have been seeing a lot of stuff lately, a lot less people coming being concerned about being gay, lesbian, that sort of thing, a lot more on the gender identity issues. And so probably two-thirds, maybe 80% of the families that are there, the parents that are there that have transgender kids, or the kids that come, go off in a little separate support group, are there for gender issues. And so I think this is an excellent opportunity. As a school system, your whole purpose is to educate. And what better way than to get your nurses to provide an information firsthand, real information to people, not speculation, not rumors, not, you know, anything that is just out there that people don't really get straight information on. It's all one side of this or that. They actually get the real medical information developed by professionals. I just lastly want to say that actually my wife is a nurse. And so, you know, she has a unique perspective. She had done labor and delivery, actually had delivered some people who had, you know, transgender people who had children. And I myself am a transgender woman. And I am out and I have transitioned and I am working as myself for the county. And it's great. So I just appreciate all you guys do. And I look forward to my daughters getting this training. Thank you.
Number two. Ron Easterbrook.
Estherbrook.
Estherbrook, sorry.
Okay.
I'm going to mispronounce most of these names.
Yeah. I've lived in, our family has lived in Peachtree City for the last 34-plus years. I'm retired now. My wife's retired. And we have our daughter and grandchildren here. The nurses' training, nurses implies medical profession. And I would simply like to know why the program is Georgia Safe Schools and not by Atlanta Health Services or Atlanta Children's Health Services? Why is this information or directives coming from a non-health organization? And I would also like to know, if you object to what's being taught, what are the options for parents? And I'd like to know what the training is directed, what age students? Are we directing attention to these real small ones like kindergarten, first grade, or children that have maturity, like children in high school? And that concludes my questions.
I just want to remind the audience that public comments are just an opportunity for us to listen. And follow-up responses will be provided by the Superintendent at later dates. Number three is Susan Nashke. Let me try first.
I answered almost everything. Good evening. My name is Susan Nashke. I live in Peachtree City. And on June 1st of this year, I retired after 23 years teaching first grade in Fayette County. So I'm really good at speaking to six-year-olds. I'm a little nervous talking to grownups. I am here to commend you for taking this initiative and providing this training to our nurses in gender, in these gender issues. Although you will undoubtedly get pushback on this, you have made the right decision. And as I tell my first graders, told my first graders, "It's a hard thing to do, but we can do hard things." As educators and administrators, we are tasked with educating our students and our staff. Parents are our most important partners in this. Ideally, they are their children's first teachers. Ideally. As much as we would like to believe that all parents will do this, the fact is, and in my experience, many do not. It then falls to our nurses to do this and to respond to students who have questions or who are in distress. The training that you are providing our nurses has simply given them the tools they need to help our students respectfully and compassionately and appropriately with the right vocabulary. Thank you for having the courage to provide this education to our nurses. Thank you.
Number four is Josh Sefko.
Good evening. My name is Josh Sefko. Live in Fayetteville. And I serve as a senior pastor at Flat Creek Baptist Church. I'm a husband to a nurse in our community. Family and I recently moved here. We're excited to be a part of this excellent area and this tremendous school system. And I know this is because a lot of ways of your efforts that we have this great reputation in our county. And I want to thank you for that. I mean that sincerely. As a parent who will be raising two daughters in the Fayette County Schools, my prayer today is that we remain committed to the facts of gender, male and female, and provide, in my hope, resources to the students who are struggling with gender confusion. I'm not here to gripe, but merely to offer myself as a resource, which I have already done in sending Dr. Barry an email with some material that I hope you would all take a look at. I would love to have the honor and the privilege of praying for you this evening. May I pray for you? Father, it is in the name of Jesus Christ we thank you for these men and these ladies up here who serve us. We also praise you for how you have fearfully and wonderfully made us. You made us for your glory. You made us for your glory and by your death, your burial, and your resurrection of Jesus Christ, we can have assurance of our purpose here on earth and now. So tonight, Lord, I pray for the leadership you have provided for us in Fayette County and the Board of Education. May they know the peace and the grace which I possess in your Son, Jesus Christ. And it's in his name we pray. Amen. Thank you.
Number five is Judy Wilson.
My name is Judy Wilson. I'm a great-grandmother and I, of three, and I live in Fayetteville. I want to thank this Board for running for office, for serving. I want to thank you for the heat that you take. And we brought some with us. But it's in love. And I want to ask your forgiveness for our not being here before. We know you've had to face things alone, and we weren't here for you. And I'm making a commitment to you now, on behalf of many that are out here, voting, Georgians here to protect Georgia's children. We're going to be here. We're going to be here listening to you. We're going to be here talking to you. We're going to be finding out what's going on in our schools. Because what has happened is, our children have been taught a lie. I have watched this for the last 40 years. And I've watched the consequences of that. There's such a thing as truth. And when truth is not present, and that's our fault, not yours, then a lie seems to be okay. That's not so. We have a truth. It comes from God Himself. This is Fayette County. This is not New York. This is not San Francisco. The family values of this community are reflected in this Board here because we elected you. We worked for you. We voted for you. And we put in your care the most precious thing that we have ever had and ever will have, our children. Because that's our future. That's our legacy. And everything that touches their hearts and minds reflects on, that you allow, reflects on you and reflects on us. We are not going to stand quietly by anymore and watch a lie be forced on a six-year-old child because somebody told them that they can be whatever they feel like. Some children feel like throwing rocks. It's just insanity. And I understand why you have done what you have done here. You've allowed outside people to come in. I have a suggestion. We don't want outside people coming in with values that are contrary to the values of families here. And it's not out of hatred or bitterness. It's out of love. If I had a cure for cancer, and I didn't share it because somebody would call me a name, what kind of a creature would I be? This type of value system is a cancer on the hearts and minds and souls of our children. We're not going to give that up. We're going to do whatever is required to make that go away. And we're going to trust you to make sure that happens. We're going to be praying for you. I promise you this. We will stand with you. We will stand beside you. We will kneel for you. But if you allow our children's minds and hearts to be assaulted, we'll stand against you. Thank you.
Number six is Vicki LaFalle.
Good evening, Superintendent Barrow, Board Members. I'm a mental health practitioner. I'm a licensed clinical social worker, and I've worked with children with special needs and emotional disturbances and their families for over 20 years. I read with interest, concern, and distress the article in The Citizen about school nurses and gender talks. I wholeheartedly support the No Bullying Program and the teaching of respecting differences. However, this can be accomplished without transgender education. Normal childhood sexual development is a process. Experimentation and questioning are not unusual. Identification with one's gender evolves over time or not. A child needs the freedom to go through this natural process without being coached or any interference. Labeling a child who's distressed with their gender as transgender is not something the school district needs to be involved in. If a school is particularly, if a child is particularly unhappy with their body or gender, the child ought to have an opportunity to speak with counselors, social workers, psychologists, not nurses. This is not a medical issue. This is an emotional issue. Teaching about transgender issues and terminology is a political statement, not an educational Mental health professionals can make families aware of how their children are feeling. And that's where it can be explored. It can be referred, children can be referred to outside resources. Does Fayette County think that our children starting in elementary school need to have gender talks? Many in the mental health and the medical fields are still debating and researching transgender sexuality. There are a variety of opinions on this, and it's a private matter for families. Families have the right to support their child and teach their children their values and beliefs. Schools ought not to be teaching children ideas and values that are in contrast to what many families believe. As soon as you are indoctrinating children with religious or political beliefs, you're taking this right away from the families. I do not think that is what Fayette families want. We can look at our colleges, and we know what Fayette needs to address. Academics, respect for open and civil discourse, not just respect for physical differences, appreciation of democracy and resiliency, so that when they start falling apart because they hear other points of view, they can pull themselves back together. Superintendent Barrow, Board Members, I respectfully caution you that while you might think you are providing support... My neighbor came to speak also. Tammy, do you mind if I take a little of your time?
Go right ahead.
Okay, thank you. I'm almost finished. I respectfully caution you that while you might think you are providing support for a few possible transgender children in our district by encouraging and explaining sexual terms and choices, reading books, and exploring topics, this is a slippery slope. Easily, you can add stress and confusion as well as hamper the emotional health of some of our most fragile children, some of our children with emotional issues, by giving them too much information at such a formative time. Children are very concrete. They are impressionable and attention-seeking. Do you believe that feelings can change gender? Most doctors will tell you it cannot. How people express their sexuality will be determined by themselves over time. And the school's only job in this matter is to teach respect. Thank you for your time.
Number nine, Ms. Varner Holmes. Oh, number seven, Tammy Hearst, I'm sorry.
I'm good. I gave my time to Vicki. You can go to number eight.
You're still got a minute.
That's okay. Vicki, good.
All right. Number eight, Michelle. I'm sorry.
Eight. I'm at a totally different topic. Maybe I'll give you a little break. Mine's not near as stressful as that, I don't think. My name is Michelle Whaley, and I am from Fayetteville. I have a daughter that is going into Whitewater High School. I come to the Board because I have no other options. As you know, Whitewater just recently implemented the STEM program, which is science, technology, engineering, and math. We're very excited about the program. My daughter was accepted into it. There's two other schools in Fayette County that also do this program. One is Sandy Creek. This will be their third year. And the other is McIntosh. Whitewater has elected not to allow STEM students to have fine arts in their STEM program. I think this is a disservice to our students. There are many articles, I've brought a lot, that emphasize the need to have an art outlet for our students. It increases decision-making creativity. It's a break from science, technology, engineering, and math. Sandy Creek allows their students to take fine arts. McIntosh allows their students to take fine arts. Whitewater will not. I have met with the counselors. I met with the principal. Their thing is, is they say that they must follow their course schedule, which allows PE and health in their freshman year. The other schools allow PE and health to be taken online through the Georgia Virtual Classroom, which was recommended to me by Kelly Floyd, counselor at Whitewater. It is not being allowed as an option. They are also not allowing, they say that they can't rearrange their schedules to allow for fine arts. I don't understand how the other schools are doing that. I have talked to the middle school orchestra teacher who sent an email to all of the STEM parents, said that she met with a person that works for Fayette County, Ms. Ray Presley King, who said that it was an option, and it was allowed, and we could pursue it. Yet when I go to Whitewater, they strike me down each and every time. And I just, I think the, what's important to the student, I think that's what should be, what we should look at, not what's most convenient as far as scheduling. If other schools in Fayette County can do it, why can't Whitewater? And why can't, you know, why can't my daughter take orchestra? It's not impeding her class schedule. It's not going to make it more difficult. I realize that PE and health I would pay for. I'm not, I'm not issuing anything against that. I'm not asking that. But they say it is, I have been, I'm quoting an assistant principal, "Whitewater policy not to allow you to take a class outside of what they offer in their schools." And I don't understand that. And I don't understand even with the new principal that we are not allowed to take fine arts. And I would like, I would like, I think that's an option for students. Thank you.
Right now, number nine, Ms. Varner Holmes.
Ms. Varner Holmes, you got it right. I live in 140 Old Mill Court, Fayetteville. And I'm here like the rest, most of the rest of them. It was nice to have the break. I was very interested in the article that Mr. Helms wrote two weeks ago. And I, it hurt my heart to know that we have come to this kind of a division in Fayette County. But what concerns me is that one of the things that was mentioned in the article was that the group that came in called Welcoming Schools is concerned about bullying. I'm concerned about bullying, too. I was bullied as a child. I was a little fat girl. And I was called Fatty. And that hurt. You know, it hurts. It hurts when you're called something. And I can identify with children who are called things that hurt them. I don't want any child to be bullied. And that is something that we can work on. We can work on bullying. That should be out, is totally not allowed. But to cloak an agenda, an LGBTQ, TQ, anyhow, I'm not trying to make fun of it, I just never can get it straight, agenda with anti-bullying is not, is not right. These children should be allowed to be children. And if there is an issue, a gender issue, which the woman who spoke very eloquently about it being, not being a nurse's issue, but if there is a gender issue, we need to have the school be able to direct the students to professionals to help them. If it's trying to normalize what is considered by at least a lot of people in this room to be deviant behavior, trying to make it normalized is, is a travesty, in my opinion. And our school system should not allow that. Thank you.
Number 10 writes in cursive. Carol Springsteen.
I switched with Randy Huff, if I may. I'm number 23 now.
All right. Is that...
So with your indulgence, I'll introduce myself. My name is Randy Huff. I live at 289 Spear Road in Peachtree City. I've resided at that residence for 32 years. Before that, I spent 13 years on Kelly Drive in Peachtree City. So I've been here about 45 years. I've had four children go through Fayette County Schools and am now blessed with five grandchildren who've come back to this beautiful community and will likewise work their way through with God's blessing, McIntosh High School, and graduate. I called, I want to come to the point tonight about the process, as I understand it from the news. I may have it wrong admittedly because I've found that fake news is something of great import in journalism today. But I'm assuming that what I was told in the paper, in the local paper, was correct. And so my problem is with the process. I was shocked, frankly, by the decision of the Superintendent, the way I read it, to allow training from a group which on cursory investigation seems to be a radical leftist group that is fully engaged in promoting the transgender movement. And wondered how it is that we could have referred, in an attempt to satisfy the need of, the stated needs of nurses, how we could have referred those folks to that particular location. Who, who was it, and I know you're not going to answer this, who was it that came up with the idea of recommending that particular group when there are state groups and groups right here in Fayette County that are, that are charged with educating professionals in the school system on needs such as the one that was, was identified by the nurses? That is, deserves explanation in the public square, in my judgment. Now, again, the process. I've been around long enough, gentlemen, to know that this, this step that's been taken, this, this attempt to satisfy the needs of nurses with respect to, to satisfying their, their perceived job requirement to answer questions that might be brought to them by students. It's a noble aspiration, no doubt about it, but there has to be limits. Manuals that I've come across that state what the role and breadth and width of, of a school nurse is, is that it engages three different ideas. And those are that they are to assess, identify, and refer. All right? It's a standard out of the manual that is a manual available to all teachers and recommended by state organizations. So in the assessment and identification process, the next step is the referral process. And who do you refer to in those instances where you have a deep-seated psychological problem that should be handled first and foremost by parents? That's left unsettled. I'm concerned, too, gentlemen, with the idea of a healthy and safe environment, please, just a second, a healthy and safe environment, because the next step in this is to, is to take all the rest of the students who seem to be uninformed and give them sensitivity training that will attempt to, to change their view of what normal sexuality is to a perversion that we're dealing with here. Thank you.
Next is Ms. Lovin, Mark Mueller.
Moye.
Moye.
I understand. My handwriting is horrible. My name is Mark Moye. I live at 285 Ridgemont Drive here in Fayetteville. And I have a background in teaching in the public school systems in Arizona. I have a master's degree in education. And I want to first say that the idea of nurses getting education in order to know how to help counsel students is a worthy idea. I think that they need be committed for that, seeking to have that knowledge. My question is, is the source of that information, I don't believe was appropriate. You have a group that we've already identified, the Welcoming Schools, that seems to be more in tune to pushing an agenda than helping our students. And they're also in conflict with the American College of Pediatrics, doctors who are experts in child development. They have identified that students who have gender dysphoria, they need to be encouraged to identify with the gender that they were born with. And that by this encouragement, this helps them to actually develop properly. Majority of students do go through this time and actually do identify with their gender, birth genders. And the nurses with the proper training can help them go through that journey and be successful. I also think it's interesting to note that Johns Hopkins, the pioneer in the gender reassignment surgery, has now come full circle, realizing that is, that the work that they did really is not productive and that there are actually some dangers in performing those surgeries. And they are now, instead of being proponents, are opponents of the transgender surgeries. And they are now, instead of being proponents, are opponents of the transgender surgeries. And I also believe that we need to make sure that we are providing the right education, the right support for our students. So therefore, what I think that I'm asking, and I'm hoping maybe a lot of people in this room would like to ask, is that we look at another source to provide education for our nurses so they can provide medically-based training, medically-based advice, and that they will have really sound advice to give to our students. And I conclude my remarks. Thank you for my time.
Thank you, board members, superintendent. Thank you for allowing us this opportunity to speak tonight. I'm also addressing the Human Rights Council Gender Sensitivity Training that allegedly our school nurses asked for. However, a couple of the nurses I knew said they never asked for it, but yet they felt compelled to attend this training. So my concern was that they were compelled to attend the training and they felt uncomfortable doing so. I'm uncomfortable talking about this subject and many of our nurses may also be uncomfortable discussing this topic with our youngest children. But my main concern is parental rights. I'm not hearing anything about parental rights. Nothing in the newspaper indicated the procedure. When a parent's child, very young child, comes to a school nurse and expresses confusion over gender identity, will that parent be called immediately to come in and sit in on the discussion? Or will it just be carte blanche discussions without parents ever being notified? Will parents ever know that their child is going through this confusion? Um, you know, it's so important that we get our parents involved. And a few months ago, the PBIS program, the Positive Behavior Intervention and Support Program, um, thank you Scott, and I'll keep an eye on that clock, um, had a program in Alliance, through the Alliance Theater where our sixth graders were going to walk across the street to go watch a performance called Slur. And not a single permission note was sent home to parents in violation of school policy. So I'm very concerned that we're getting a little lax when it comes to parental involvement with their children. And I just want to make sure that parents in this county become aware of some of the issues and some of the topics that are being discussed in the classroom. Make sure that our teachers understand the parameters that are set by you, the school board, on what they can discuss with students in the classroom without permission of the I, I just, just want to finish up my comments by, by encouraging you to be sensitive to all students for all their problems. I commend you for that. But I also agree that the source of the training is very problematic and I appreciate our pastor offering his services to help counsel children with parental permission of course. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
My name is Alan Baldwin. And I, I rise simply to ask the board to consider, as we've seen tonight, that the issue of gender identity is both controversial and divisive. And as such, it takes us down a path which distracts us from what I think is the primary mission of our education system. And so in the future, as you look at these issues, as you look at policies, as you demonstrate something that we're all very appreciative of, your concern for our students, that you would consider the fact that these types of subjects are best handled by no one but the parent. And that I would like you to, to focus on that issue. And I thank you for this opportunity.
I've got a very simple subject. For the past 15 years, I've been talking for the students of Fayette County High School. In the last 15 years that I've been working there, they have walked from the school to Sam's Auditorium. Thirty-degree weather, rain, snow, sleet. The reason I know it, because I take my golf cart and block the traffic so the kids can get back and forth. And I think it's time for Fayette County to get an auditorium in their newest high school, private, Tiger High School. Tiger Pride, they do as much as they can do. But when you have to walk in bad weather and everything else, plus the second thing I want to say is that it takes away from the teachers. Cause the kids take 10 to 12 minutes to walk and then 10 to 12 minutes to walk back. So that only gives a teacher 30 minutes to teach anything that they're doing. So I encourage the board to vote tonight to build the auditorium. And I thank you for your time.
My name is W. Lute. I live at 115 Rose Dell Court, Fayetteville, Georgia. I have a daughter who graduated in 2011 from Fayette County High School. I have a son who is going to be a rising junior at Fayette County High School. Hopefully he'll graduate in 2019. And I have our youngest daughter will hopefully be graduating from Fayette County High School in 2024. So we've been involved for a long time in Fayette County High School and in the community, and we're very thankful for it. And we plan to be involved for a very long time coming up with just a 10-year-old right now. Um, it's my understanding that you guys will be voting tonight on the auditorium for Fayette County High School. I thank you, was able to email each of you and let you know my thoughts and concerns and my hopes for this auditorium. And just wanted to encourage you to vote yes for this, for the Fayette County High School. Fayette County High School is the flagship high school of Fayette County. And yet, we are the only high school that doesn't have an auditorium attached to the school. It's vitally important, the Fine Arts Department. We know that our fine arts produce some of the greatest leaders, some of the greatest thinkers. It's not for those who are just going into music and drama. It's for those who are going to be our future leaders. They learn how to speak when they're in drama. It's incredibly vital that we encourage these students and these parents. These students are very aware that the other high schools, they've been to the other auditoriums. And we've been able to participate in activities at those other auditoriums. And it's fun to go, but it's hard not to like, why don't we have something like this? So I'm just encouraging you guys, thank you so much for all that you do for Fayette County. We really do appreciate it. I know it's hard work. And I just asked that you would vote yes for the auditorium for us. Thank you.
My name is Kevin Grell. I live at 475 Ridgewood Drive, Fayetteville, Georgia. And I read the following statement. "Georgia Fayette County and our community values and mores regarding how sex information is delivered in schools is traditional and conservative. We just need to look at present laws and policies to show this. First, per the official code of Georgia 20-2773, the state prohibits health services from distribution of dispensing of abortion, offense, performance of abortions, referral for abortion, and distribution of contraceptives. Second, per Georgia Department of Education Rule 160-4-2.12, the schools are directed to provide abstinence-based sexual education with an emphasis on abstinence from sexual activity until marriage and fidelity in marriage, and are not directed to provide contraceptive education. Third, per the above rule, school districts are to provide a means for parents to choose for their child not to receive sex education. I for one, and I believe a preponderance of Fayette County parents, support these rules and hold traditional and conservative values concerning how information about sex is delivered in schools. Many other states and communities in our nations and national-level advocacy organizations are progressive and liberal in their values and mores and would not support these rules and laws. Therefore, I have concern, and I believe a majority of parents in this county have a concern, that a national-level progressive liberal, alternative lifestyle LGBTQ advocacy group, the Human Rights Campaign and their Welcoming Schools projects was used to inform and train our school nurses on how to talk to our students about sex and gender issues. Such organization's values regarding sex and gender are not consistent with our value, with our community values and mores. Recognizing there is a diversity of sexual values and mores, even within this predominantly traditional and conservative community, and in an effort to support the parent and community engaged pillar of the Georgia Department of Education, there needs to be policy set about school district employee interaction and instruction of students regarding value-sensitive sexual, sex orientation and gender identification issues, curriculum and parental involvement of such. Per school district policy BD, policy development, allowing for concerned citizens to originate policy proposals, I am publicly submitting a policy proposal to the superintendent regarding this issue for his review. And per the policy directive, I expect that he will bring it before you with his recommendation for your consideration. I'll forego reading the policy, uh, the policy draft, but I will submit it to the superintendent for his consideration and for your review upon his, for his review and for your consideration
All right. Good evening, everybody. My name is Lori Gueye. I live at 160 Granby Lane here in Fayetteville, Georgia. I've lived here for several years and I'm the proud mother of a wildcat. I'm here tonight in support of your nurses' education program. I think this is a wonderful initiative. Today, in anticipation of this meeting, I was of course going through the social media comments out there and I noticed a couple of things. One, we definitely need more education, not only the students and the staff, but also the public here at large. It was incredibly disheartening to read what adults were saying, knowing that children, students were going to be reading those comments today. I'm so proud to show up here tonight. I brought 30 of these rainbow pins and I passed them all out and I ran out and people were asking me for more. I thought for sure I was going to leave here tonight with a purse full of them. So to come here tonight and be standing here in a sea of rainbow and a sea of love, I just want to tell all of the students that are here that they are not alone, that they are supported and that it does get better. It will get better because people here, whole big roomful of them, are committed to making this world a better place, a world of inclusion and acceptance and love and tolerance for all. Hate is not a family value. Love is the family value that I hold most dearest to my heart. That is our primary motto in my home. I have a teenage son who is an ally. He has been bullied. He has friends who are gay. He has suffered incredibly at school, on the bus, only because he stood up and said, hey, that's not okay to talk to people that way. This kind of behavior from other students, it comes from somewhere. And my son and his friends have all gone not only to their guidance counselors, but also to their school nurses for assistance with that. We have been referred to counseling outside of the school as is appropriate for a nurse to do. And I'm very excited to know that the nurses in our school district will be trained to use the proper terminology and be able to deal with these issues with sensitivity, putting aside any outside feelings that they may have based on their church beliefs, et cetera. So suicide is my main concern when it comes to LGBTQ issues and it's a huge issue tied to the trans community. It's something we have to take very seriously. And I just ask that everybody commenting on social media, please remember that there are students out there, there are children, there are adults who are in a vulnerable place and they're struggling and they read those comments and they take them to heart and many times they take action based on what you say. So thank you for your time and have a great night.
Number 18 is Lee Chatham. Hi, Lee Chatham, 1235 Marione Street. My family moved here in 1983. And I grew up and knew I was gay from the time I was a very little child and had to deal with such bullying over the years, such painful things. I'm going to say something right now that's going to make people uncomfortable. Faggot. When people call you names and make you feel like you're degraded or under them, it does not make us feel equal. We, we can, we can be equal. I'm sorry, I did not mean to make people feel uncomfortable, but in a way I did. Because what is happening is children, little children who are gay or trans are not getting the support they need from the community because of fear and because of people judging them and putting them below themselves. God is going to be standing, judging all of us on Judgment Day. We're all going to be sitting right by next to each other. None of us gets to put each other down and say who's going to heaven and who's going to hell. So please, take your judgments back and learn how to love each other and support each other. And this is just a step. The nurses learning how to use the right words is just a first step. And, you know, I'm going to say this in a funny way. I don't mind straight people as long as they act gay in public.
My name is Linda Bink. I do not live in Fayette County anymore. I live in Calweda. But I raise my sons here. I still have a lot of friends who are raising their grandchildren here in your community. A lot of the now adult, almost 50-year-olds that grew up in and around my home and still visit me several times a year, still have very close ties to this community. And like you, I serve on the Board of Education in Calweda County. I represent District Four. So I truly respect the job that you do and the heat that you take. I would like to also, to kind of add a little bit of humor here. You remember the quote that Mark Twain made regarding school boards, do you not? And I think sometimes we need to back away and laugh at ourselves. Mr. Twain, the gist of what he said was, you know, Mr. Twain made the comment that God created idiots and that was for practice and then he's created school boards. So keep that in mind as we have this conversation. With regard to this subject, the job, as I understand it, of a Board of Education and a superintendent is to educate a child. It is not to indoctrinate. Indoctrination is the responsibility of the parent, if, when, and how they so choose. You've got a full-time job, Mr. Superintendent and members of this board, to take care of educating children, to prepare them for the future. I too am concerned about bullying. I have seen it happen to one of my grandsons and we took care of it. But we didn't take care of it by expecting the government or a local governing authority such as the Board of Education to step in and put the big boy pants on for them. Let me clue you in on something. They're getting ready to step into a highly competitive, tough world. And they're going to be bullied throughout their life. It can be because of where they live, the way they talk. My parents took me from Houston, Texas, when I was seven years old and enrolled me in the first grade in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. Don't you think I may have talked a little funny? I had a second-grade teacher that literally would not allow me to sit in her classroom because my, the way I spoke insulted her. Now let me tell you something about what these kids are getting ready to face. I think bullying's a travesty and it can be handled and it can be corrected. But it is not going to come from a measure such as what you're doing here. I don't know who contacted who with regard to welcoming schools. I hope to goodness that no one on this board or this superintendent I hope to goodness that no one on this board or this superintendent reached out to this outside organization and asked them to come into your county. I would, because trust me, I'm on it. I'm gonna find out if they're trying to come into Calweda. This needs to stop. These children belong to the parents. They do not belong to the government.
Number twenty is Kelly Edwards.
Thank you. It was around this time last year that I walked in front of you all and asked for a gender-neutral bathroom. I ended up walking away with more than I could ask for. My very first day of school, I get called to my guidance counselor, and I'm told every single one of them had been trained on LGBT Matters. My counselor looks at me, smiles, and respectfully listens to me, tells my comfortable pronouns, gives me permission to change, and a single-stalled restroom away from the lockers, and offers to talk to any teacher for me concerning to the fact that I'm a non-binary trans person. For the very first time ever, I felt like I had a chance to be comfortable in my school. I had hoped that it would get better. I had hoped that it would start to expand, and I wouldn't have to hide anymore. I had hoped that someday it wouldn't just be that one hall. It would be the entire school. And although I am leaving now to move on to college, I want to make that hope come alive for all the other kids like me, for all the other kids in the LGBT community who have felt like they didn't matter, who I have felt ashamed, alone. I want for them to know that who they are is okay, and they have support. That's why I just think it is important for all staff within schools to get training, to have an understanding of kids who deserve that chance just like everybody else, because no matter who we are and who we love, we are all still human. We need to stop making mockery and pain familiar, and instead fill each classroom with the heart for everybody. We need to stop stripping and humiliating those who are different. Instead, fill each classroom with respect. We need to stop teaching hate. Instead, start teaching love. Thank you.
I'd like to remind the crowd that you've been requested not to show support or non-support, clapping, moving, et cetera.
Good evening. My name is Billy Holder. I live at 145 Little Creek Drive. I'm the father of a twelve-year-old non-binary student here in the Fayette County system, and I'm also the vice president of the Relationship Equality Foundation, housed right here in Fayette County. Thank you for this opportunity. Georgia has the fourth-highest trans population in the country, so let's look around. There are about two hundred people in this room. So out of that two hundred people, if we were the trans population of the state of Georgia, one hundred and sixty of us would report being bullied in K-12 schools. Forty of us would report a sexual assault in our K-12 schools. Eighty of us physically assaulted in our K-12 schools. One hundred and twenty-eight of us knew we were trans when we were in K-12 school. One-third of all those attacks came from the administrators and teachers in our K-12 schools, and that's unacceptable. The school board mission reads, "Our mission is to forge and equip a community of learners who confidently face challenges, embrace opportunities, and positively impact our world." How can they do that if you won't teach them that it's okay to be themselves? By allowing them to freely express their true self. If you won't give teachers, administrators, nurses, counselors, the tools that they need to support our students, how can they ever achieve what we set out for them? The beliefs of the board state, "Public education is a foundation of a free society. Schools exist to promote intellectual, social, and personal development of all students. All children can learn in a safe, supportive, and nurturing environment. Education is a partnership among students, families, schools, and community. Education comes first. Students should be prepared as independent, productive problem solvers to successfully meet the challenges of the future." The trainings and policies given to the nurses exemplify the board's commitment to this mission and to our students. By preventing protections for our students and not allowing future trainings for our educators, administrators, and school officials, as some of the people here may do tonight and ask you, you will fail this mission, you will fail your beliefs, and you will fail our students. Will this board protect all of our students, specifically adding LGBTQ, gender nonconforming, and the plus to its anti-bullying policy for all of our schools? Thank you for your time.
Good morning, or afternoon, afternoon. My name is Steve Coffey. I'm a professor. I'm a retired professor, and I'm a retired teacher from Fulton County Schools. I was in Fulton County Schools twenty years ago when this came before Fulton County Schools. What I wanna talk about is not what's been said here. I wanna talk about the repercussions for the faculty. Teachers were not supporting it. We're talking about a seriously liberal county. Teachers did not support it. The carnage with the faculty, I was screamed at by the assistant superintendent at the top of her lungs. I never said a word, "Do not mess with..." I was a master teacher in the school. "Don't let anybody mess with any child in the school. I'm in your grill." But because I was ordained as a pastor, I was considered, and I was harassed after I was ordained as a pastor. I had never been to the superintendent's office except for one thing. He had changed his office to an art gallery, and I'm a master artist. That's what I taught at GMC for fifty quarters. Couple of you, I had your children at GMC, and I was asked to be on the school board and run for the school board, and I said, "No way. I know what you're going through. I was a commissioner in Fulton County, and as I was on the Georgia State Board of Our Educators. I know how tough it is right there." But the backside is, what's gonna happen to teachers who have a different moral stand, who are Christians? What will the superintendent do to them? I never said one word against anybody, ever. "Do not mess with a child near me. I will be in your grill." But because I was a Christian, I was harassed mercilessly. Teacher of the Year four times, blocked two more, because I was a Christian and because I had the moral stand that I did. There's a whole other opening that will happen with this. There's a whole other thing you've never thought about with the teachers in the school, the harassment that teachers will take, because you're simply a Christian. If you wanna be gay, that's your business, go for it. Don't ever mess with a kid with me. Do not harass a child if it's a child. And Fulton County, by the way, did not introduce this to elementary. I was a high school teacher at the time. We all went, and I vividly remember going, "Thank you, Lord, they're not doing it to elementary. Those poor little children, they're innocent. Don't mess with an elementary child." But to encourage it, to bring it forward to the children, they're naive. To bring this to them and present them to do is just about being a pedophile. Thank you.
Number twenty-three, Carol Springsteen.
Carol Springsteen, 1152 Sandy Creek Road in Fayetteville. Ladies and gentlemen and members of the school board, Fayette County School Board, you are an extension of our community, representing our schools, citizens, and its children. Fayette County is very proud of the school system we have built, and we hold them to the highest esteem. As you know, schools receive the greatest portion of taxpayer money, and it is our desire to use this money to build a school system where our children will excel academically. Schools were built upon the principle of teaching children reading, writing, and arithmetic, and not wasting taxpayer dollars by supporting and joining in the cause with gender identity organizations. However, you have disgraced our schools, our community, and our children by taking unauthorized power to initiate gender identity training. Our educators have usurped the power and the right of parents and grandparents by allowing schools to handle this matter as they deem fit. Again, it is not the responsibility of the schools, but the right and the duty of the parents and grandparents to provide the children with proper counsel and medical attention. You blatantly chose to take it upon yourself to go above and beyond the parents and grandparents and your decision by inviting outside organizations to come in and instruct with a desire to take over a school system, and because of your decision, were outraged. Separation of church and state was formed so the church would not be overtaken by the government. We need to protect and separate ourselves from invasive organizations. Pandora's box has been opened, and the damage that has been done to this community needs to stop before it gets any bigger. No one in our school system has given the authority to overshadow the grandparents. And I would like to say, years ago, I heard Dr. Dobson talk about the rhyme, "Sticks and stones will break my bones, but names will never harm me," and oh, yes, they do. And I do feel for children, I've had three children of my own in the school system, and I have brought them up to respect and to love everyone, and no matter who they are, that they need, they were taught this and trained in our house. And I will say that my children are very respectful of others, and they put others first in their feelings, and they know that. But I, in closing, I'd like to give my opinion, and my opinion is, I don't know who it was to initiate this, but in my opinion, it must have been someone, and I feel with a deranged mind, to have orchestrated an agenda like this, and it is they and not the children who need counseling.
Number twenty-four, Michael Server.
Hi, I'm Mike Server. I live at 100 Winfair Drive in Tyrone, Georgia, and I wanna thank you for letting me have some of this time, a lot of your time tonight. Thank you. I am speaking in reference to the Human Rights Campaign and the Welcoming Schools curricula, that I have a master's degree in counseling and have been involved with children, their emotional and educational development for over forty years, including four of my own who have attended the Fayette County School System. I'm really glad for the training benefits that the professionals within our school system are engaged with, including the medical professionals. However, the information that had been provided through the Welcoming Schools curricula speaks to an issue where there is no issue. Gender confusion, however it is defined, is eliminated far and away by most children's lives upon going through puberty. Attempts therefore to engage or clarify before then only add to confusion. They don't clear it up. Any information engaged with before high school in reference to gender confusion, identity, et cetera, therefore should be directed to the child's parents, counselors, that being outside of the school system, and spiritual advisors. Please refrain therefore from any implementation or integration of this curricula in the Fayette County School System. I wanna thank you for your time. God bless you.
Good evening. My name is Rebecca Pierce Powell, and I live in Fayetteville. I have two children that have attended Fayette County High School. First, I am asking you to proceed with the construction of the auditorium at FCHS. My children have both been involved in the performing arts, and I know it is very needed. Second, I want to thank you for your decision to train the nurses of our county in the subject of gender. We as a county should be working towards understanding our children. I encourage you to continue in these efforts by extending the training to all faculty and staff. When my son was having trouble with Asperger's, it made a world of difference after we educated his teachers on his needs and the words that he was using. Thank you.
Number twenty-six, Sarah Van...
I don't mind. People have called me worse. First, I wanna thank you guys for the opportunity to speak. My daughters here are students at Inman Elementary, and I really appreciate you, Dr. Barrow, and the rest of the board making the decisions to ensure that the staff there and throughout the district have all the tools that they need to help all of our students. I believe, I just wanna jump in real quick. I've heard a lot of people talking about the curriculum. In a very long article that was written in The Citizen, there were about, I think, two sentences that said, "This isn't going to be part of the curriculum," buried within all of that other information that was given that people seemed to get very upset about. So if that had been maybe the focus of that article, people would feel a little bit differently. That's just my opinion. But I do wanna say that I feel that a lot of the commentary I hear from people is backlash to, "How dare they create all these terms?" Which is sort of ridiculous to me. The terminology has been around for a lot longer than people understand. It's just something that's becoming a focus now, thank goodness for those students. But I wanna say, like, we all as parents spend time reading articles on how to understand the texts that our children are sending, because we don't speak the same language as they do. When these students come to the school and reach out to the nurses, it's vital that the nurses understand the terminology that these kids are going to be using to describe themselves. So learning that was hugely important, so that you can meet those kids where they need to be met on their level and validate them as people. As an anecdotal story, I moved here because I was a flight attendant. As some of you might know, a lot of male flight attendants tend to be homosexual. One of them that I flew with was a young man who had just recently graduated from Fayette County High. At home and in the county, he was completely closeted. At work, he was out and proud and able to live his truth. About a year after we stopped flying, or I stopped flying, I heard that he had finally come out to his family, and it went very, very poorly. His father threw him out of the house. He ended up moving in with friends of his in Tennessee. He seems to be doing okay, but he still doesn't speak to his own family. All I could think was, what if that, what if he decided to come out when he was fifteen and in high school, and he gets no validation at home? Isn't it vital for that student to be able to go to school and see an adult that is willing to meet them and help them and talk to them and recognize them as being human and deserving of kindness and deserving of respect? Because otherwise, if there's no one there to validate, those kids are reaching their hands out, and when no one's there, they end up doing something severe, and none of us wanna see that happen. So that was it. Thank you very much for your time. Come on, ladies.
Number twenty-seven, Adi Davis. Davis, Adi Davis.
Good evening, Board of Education members, I appreciate the time. You've had a lot of people up here tonight, so I'm gonna be very short and very sweet, just a few little reminders. We live in the United States of America, I think people need to remember that. And, you know, we always say in our pledge, "Liberty and justice for all." Well, I think we need to remember about justice for ALL, all, not for some, but for all. Now, the nurses of Fayette County School serve all the students. All the students. I think we understand what I'm saying here. Now, there should be no discrimination allowed because, and certainly not, well, let me just put it this way, let's remember that this is a country based on division of church and state. And also, my final words are, and this I think is out of the Bible, "Judge not." Thank you for your time.
Number twenty-
By the way, that was about the gender issue.
Number twenty-eight has, we'll cross it out. Number twenty-nine is Jenny Davis. Number twenty-nine, Jenny Davis.
My name is Jenny Davis, I live in Fayette County, thank you for your time. Most people, I'm gonna talk to you about the gender issue. Not comfortable speaking in front of a lot of people, so hopefully you'll be able to understand me. Unlike the last person, or maybe the person before that, I am concerned about the curriculum. I am concerned where it stops, or where it starts, or if it begins with the nurses and you're gonna discuss things. My child can go in and speak to a nurse, but then turn around. When is it drawing the line where the teacher needs to teach it in the classroom? I'd like to know where the paperwork is on the verbiage that would be used. I understand there are certain definitions and terms and things that you would use, but when is it gonna become appropriate to use it in the classroom, or will it not? Will it always just stay at that spot? You know, having two children that are in Fayette County Schools, yes, both have been bullied. One has a social situation, and the other has a birth defect, a very rare genetic syndrome, and has cleft lip and cleft palate, even adults stare at her. So, you know, we're, and that's not even, my concern is the changing, how you're gonna teach her or him biology, or, I would like to think that they're taught history, and English, and respect, and those other things. But I believe that the nurses and staffs have a full plate, dealing with social delays and other things like that, that either doing so well that you can take more on, or some things maybe should be addressed at home. And I would like also to say that some of the affiliation that was on the Citizen website, the Georgia Safe Schools Coalition, some of the links that are on there for the GSA discussion is not active. The Story Collection Project, that link is not available. Some people that you click on, there's no data on them as well. And if this is going to be taught, then we should be able to have full information on the people that are affiliated on these websites, and their information is gonna be taught to our growing next generation, to a six-year-old. I'd like to know the methods behind the people that are training these nurses. We're going based on their word, but yet I can't find out anything when I link onto their page. So that's some of my concern, and I apologize for taking so long, but kinda like Ream Emrick, Treasurer of GSSC Incorporated, and Mary Collins, those aren't available. So, I didn't know if this would be an opt-in or opt-out situation, and thank you for your time, and I understand you can't answer any more questions, but.
And lastly, we have Dr. John Potts. John Potts. Alright, well, that concludes our public comments, I'd like to thank everybody for being here. And just wanna remind you that if there's any response that is necessary, the Superintendent will respond. Of course, you're welcome to contact any Board member and say whatever you wanna say, we'll listen. And I would like to suggest we take about a minute recess, because I'm not sure everybody here wants to stay for the business portion of our meeting. And so, is everybody okay with that? So we'll recess for about a minute.